The League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose candidates for public office. You can rely on the League to present fair and civil candidate forums where each candidate is allowed an equal chance to respond. Local elections typically have a much lower voter turnout than presidential or midterm elections. Yet it is the local elections that have real consequences in our day-to-day lives. In many ways, our local officials have the most impact on our city and our quality of life. I hope that your attendance here tonight means that you are making your plan for how you will cast your ballot on or before April 1st. Please be reminded that Naperville Public Schools will be on spring break and you may want to consider voting early. In addition to watching candidate forums live or recorded, you may also find candidate information on vote4011.org, our nonpartisan online voter guide. All candidates have been invited to respond to questions and their answers appear complete and unedited. A video of this candidate forum will be linked to vote4011. And now let me introduce our moderator for tonight, Barb Lyman.
Thank you, Susan. I also would like to welcome you to the Candidate Forum for the Naperville City Council. As Susan said, my name is Barb Lyman, a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton. I do live in Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forums this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Providing opportunities to meet candidates is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so voters can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. I would like to now invite the candidates to turn on their videos. Participating in tonight's forum for Naperville City Council are: Candidate Bonzal, Candidate Bruzen Taylor, Candidate Gibson, Candidate Holshower, Candidate Jayswal, Candidate McDaniel, Candidate Sayed, and Candidate White. The format tonight is a forum, not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. The League of Women Voters is not responsible for the accuracy of statements made by the candidates. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. All candidates attending tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their one-minute opening statements. They will then alternate an order in which they will answer questions for one minute. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement, continuing our alternating pattern. A member of the League will be acting as timekeeper and I will enforce the time limits. Candidates, you will see a slide that will let you know that you have 30 seconds, then 15 seconds, and then stop. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. To ensure that tonight's questions for the forum represent a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters has reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness and to avoid duplication. Finally, I don't want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates who are not only willing to serve in office, but who agreed to be here tonight to share their ideas and goals. So let us get started. Candidate Bonzal, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you, Barb, and thank you, League of Women Voters. I'm a proud member of League of Women Voters for the last few years. I'm Magna Bonzal. I moved to Naperville 20 years back with my family. I have been, currently I'm planning in zoning commissioner for the city of Naperville, former township trustee for the Wheaton Board Member Kids Matter, and as well serving several other nonprofits as well. Regularly attending the city council meetings in the last few years, I have come up with three main priorities which are paramount to me, which is public safety and supporting our law enforcement, economic development, supporting our local businesses, and fiscal responsibility respecting your hard-earned money. Number three is mental health crisis, which is growing in the community and I would like to address this. I also graduated from Police and Fire Academy and I did some ride-in on programs with the police officers. So these are the priority and this is purpose. I'm running for Naperville City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate President Taylor, your opening statement. You're muted.
Thank you. I'm Councilwoman Jennifer Brizan-Taylor. I'm running for reelection for Naperville City Council. I also am a member of the League of Women Voters. Now, I grew up in South Naperville and I currently now live in North Naperville with my family. Professionally, I spent most of my career in public service versus a Cook County prosecutor and now as a councilwoman. I also taught constitutional law. I'm running for reelection because I understand what makes Naperville special. People move here for the schools, the parks, the city amenities, and the crime-free neighborhoods. But none of this occurs in a vacuum. It is because we have a vibrant local economy. And I'm running to continue to focus on our business community, reasonable development, public safety, our first responders, and sustainability measures. I love this city and want to build on the success started by my predecessors. Successes have nurtured the last four years and I'll work to grow in my next term. And since elected, I focus on city business only and risen above partisan politics to ensure the decisions I make are best for the city as a whole, not because of special interest groups. And so don't forget to vote to reelect me. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gibson, your one-minute opening statement.
Great. Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight. My name is Mary Gibson and I'm honored to be running for Naperville City Council. As a longtime resident and active community member, I've dedicated myself to serving Naperville in many leadership positions. I was honored to be elected by our community to the Naperville Park District in 2021. And because of my commitment to that role and my proven ability to work with all members of the board across the aisle, I was really honored to have been elected unanimously as park board president for three consecutive terms. I also serve as Naperville Riverwalk Commissioner for four years now. I've graduated from Naperville Citizen Police Academy and Fire Academy and am a member of Naperville's Community Emergency Response Team. My professional background includes experience as a director at a data analytics firm and extensive education in public policy. These experiences have equipped me with the skills necessary to address complex issues and make informed decisions for our community. As your council member, I'll prioritize fiscal responsibility, champion public safety, and advocate for government transparency and accountability. I'm committed to fostering unity and making decisions to reflect all of our Naperville because every voice serves to be heard.
Thank you. Candidate Holshower.
Hi, everyone. My name is Councilman Ian Holshower and I'm running for reelection. I think leadership is about giving people something to believe in that's bigger than themselves and I want people to believe in Naperville. A few things I've been really proud of in my first term on the city council. First, developing opportunities for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities to have housing for the rest of their lives in the community they grew up in. Second, removing lead service lines so that future generations of Napervilleans have clean water to drink and also our water discharge down the Mississippi River is safer for that watershed. Finally, I'm proud to have championed the extension of the Naperville Riverwalk from downtown to the Edward Hospital campus, groundbreaking for which we should see within the next year and a half. I'm asking for your vote on April 1st and it's been an honor of a lifetime to serve as your city councilman and I hope to get to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Jayswal, your one-minute opening statement, please. And you want to unmute yourself?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nag Jayswal. I haven't been a long-term resident of Naperville. I moved to Naperville because of the tech corridor, IATA tech corridor, the schools, parks, and overall safety of the city. I raised three kids and three generations live in this beautiful city. My platform is I'm working on increasing the tax base so that it can reduce the burden on residents and bring in, you know, more business without compromising the quality of services and safety. And how am I going to do that? I'm going to use my 30 years' experience and education. I have dual masters, a master's in electrical engineering and MBA and a 30 years' experience as a digital transformation in Fortune 100 companies that are the same size as Naperville. So learn more on nagjayswal.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Sayed, your one-minute opening statement.
Good evening, Naperville community. My name is Ashwath Sayad and I'm a resident of Naperville for the last eight years. I moved to this wonderful city and this wonderful country eight years ago as an immigrant. So presently, I have been serving on Naperville Public Library as a trustee and for the last two years, I've been serving as the board president. I'm also with Lowson Fishers as board of director and I'm also a committee member of 360 Youth Services. And I was one of the community members who stepped up in 2020 to take the lead on Senex 2020 project and I was the co-chair for that. And I built a coalition of 150 individuals and organizations and we ran that project and we were top in the country. So I have a track record of serving this community for many, many years. So my platform is excellence in public safety, sustainable future, and responsible development. Thank you. I request for your vote. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. And Candidate McDaniel, your one-minute opening statement.
Good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Derek McDaniel. I've lived in Naperville since I was four years old. I grew up here off of 87th and Modav. My wife and I, we got married at Naperville Settlement Chapel on a beautiful snow evening on December 2nd. We rented a small little one-bedroom apartment on the corner of Washington and Maine. And now here we are raising our three kids and we could not imagine being anywhere else but right here in Naperville. You know, over the past few years, there's been a lot of noise. It's filtered into our local conversations. Causes the loose side of what's really important, the city business. You know, I'm running for Naperville City Council to protect and to celebrate those unique characteristics that make Naperville such an amazing place to live, a place to grow, a place to be safe. You know, at its core, Naperville is a community of volunteers, people who give themselves every day to make Naperville better. I'm running to ensure we spend our tax dollars wisely so we can keep our property tax rates low and provide an affordable community that benefits every Naperville resident. And I'm running to grow our economy and bring new business to Naperville. I've done that as planning zoning commissioner for two terms, four years. It is an honor to run on Naperville City Council and I ask for your vote on or before April 1st.
Thank you so much. And Candidate White, your one-minute opening statement.
Well, hello. I'm Councilman Benny White and I'm running for reelection for the Naperville City Council. And first, I'd like to thank the League for hosting us this evening. I'm a retired military officer, retired as a lieutenant colonel and a West Point graduate. And I tell you that because those are the things that have helped to shape my values. But after serving my country, I've been serving this community for the last 13 years. I've served on numerous boards, but in particular, I've been on the Indian Prairie 204 School Board for five years, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners as well. And for the last eight years, I've served as your Naperville City Councilman. I'm so excited about the work we've been able to accomplish. We've kept this city the safest city in America, as well as the number-one city to raise a family. As far as the next term is concerned, I want us to continue to focus on public safety, good governance, economic growth, environmental sustainability, and strengthening our community. You can learn more about me by going to my website at BennyWhite.org. I am number one on the ballot and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, your first question, ladies and gentlemen, is this. What steps should the city of Naperville take now to ensure that future energy sources best serve its residents? So I'll repeat one more time for you. What steps should the city of Naperville take now to ensure that the future energy sources best serve its residents? And we'll begin with Candidate Bruzen Taylor.
Thank you. So I'm going to start by saying that this is an issue that does matter to me. I am actually the voluntary council liaison for the Naperville Environment and Sustainability Task Force, also known as NEST. So this is something that I've been paying attention to and talking with them and the experts they have there for quite some time. As many people know, IMEA approached us about a year ago to renew our contract early. And since that time, I have worked to build a consensus among council to make sure that we make decisions as to our energy future on our timeline, not IMEA's timeline. And so that's something I'm proud of, also make sure that we're transparent every part of the way, something we're going to have multiple workshops on, public feedback as to that. And also whatever option that we pick with the energy consultant that I push for us to hire, who can give us all our different options and the pros and cons of each of those options, that we properly bid that out. And so there has been a consensus on council as to that. I'm very proud of that work behind the scenes because we have to make sure that we... Oh, goes by fast.
Thank you. Candidate Gibson.
Yes, thank you. I am emphatically opposed to renewing the IMEA contract as it stands. I think we need bidding process, a more thorough evaluation of our options, one that starts with the city outlining the criteria of what it's looking for in an energy contract. I think we need to weigh costs, environmental impact, and service levels and reliability. And when I say costs, we also need to consider current costs and future costs to our city. I think that's what elected leaders do. The individual consumer and business cost for electricity is obviously important. I've been park district commissioner for four years, president for three, and we've had three tornadoes hit Naperville during that time. The cost to our community and to individuals, both through tax dollars and our individual wallets of these big weather events can't be discounted. So we need to make sure we're not burdening future generations of Napervilleans with undue cost by the decisions we make today.
Thank you. Candidate Holshower?
Thank you. I agree with many of Candidate Gibson's comments on this matter. But I would add to this, that the timing of this discussion is also crucial. Naperville negotiated in good faith with its energy provider for the contract renewal date to be in 2030, meaning we have until 2030 to decide on our future energy source. The changes that are occurring in energy markets from year to year are stunning right now. And the idea of accelerating a decision by five years only serves to benefit a provider of energy that is stuck in the past, providing 80% of its energy from coal. We are far and ahead the largest carbon emitter per capita of any of our neighboring communities, which isn't something to be proud of. As the best community in America, part of our values is the way we take care of our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Jayswal.
I'm going to extend. I agree with Candidate Bruzen Taylor. To extend that, as an engineer and as a practitioner of renewable energy, I have solar at my home. I would like Naperville to extend residential solar so that most of the homes, if they can afford and subsidized, get 60% of the energy produced while we are preparing for the 2035 contract. And we can also take advantage of schools and public municipal buildings within Naperville as we have the flexibility and get 60 to 70%. So we are ahead of the game, we are sustainable, and that is my greener Naperville. So I have GEMS as my platform and G is for Greener Naperville. So I believe that we can jumpstart that while the consultants are working on next suggestions. Thank you.
Candidate McDaniel.
All right, there you go. Thank you very much. So, you know, I think everyone on this call would agree that coal is a pretty dirty source of energy. You know, the current contract we have with IMEA and the proposed contract we have has a number of restrictive covenants, does not allow us to use any existing current technology that may be available today or any future technology that could help us reduce our reliance and help us move towards a more renewable source. My, the way I look at this, priorities would be low cost for our residents and our business owners. Naperville is the second-largest economy in the state. I would prioritize a reliable source of energy and also a reasonable transition to a more renewable source. Those are all things that I think are incredibly important as we look at this. Definitely, we need to clearly move towards a more sustainable platform, but one that allows us to have clear understanding of what costs are for residents, what costs are for businesses, and also allow us to use technology that is available today but also available 20, 30 years from now.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Sayed.
Thank you, Barb. So I'm part of NEST Naperville Sustainable Task Force for the last two years. And I have worked with the organization very closely with the community, with elected officials, and trying to be an advocate for clean energy. So I was one of the person who was leading some of the projects on this thing within the community where we talked, educate our community about clean energy. So as of now, we have a bad coal energy, which we are getting it, which is not good for us and for the next generation. So it's a $2 billion contract we are planning to sign and we still have time to sign that, you know, it's not in a rush. So my suggestion is, my recommendation is that we should have multiple options. Like open bidding, definitely we need to think of competitors. If we can get more people who can come and give a presentation about clean energy. Second is invest in local energy generation. If we can have something like that where we can initially in that Naperville, we can work on this. Thank you.
Candidate White.
As many of you know, we own one of the dirtiest coal plants in the country. And as far as I'm concerned, I will not vote for anything that extends that contract under its current form. So it's something we definitely should not do. As it stands right now, we have hired a consultant that's going to help us make some decisions there. I am excited to hear what they're going to present to us and I'm thinking those as well would be workshops that would be open to the public so the public can have some input and they can listen into what we're going to be doing as well. As a minimum, I think we need to bid it out and get the best, again, the best price with the cleanest energy. So that's what I'm hoping that we can do. And if we can remove some of the restrictions that have been placed on us, that would help as well. Some of those restrictions would be maybe at some of our schools that would love to use some renewables. If you look in 204, they actually, on the Aurora side, they actually can do that, but the Naperville schools cannot. So those are some of the things I think we can do that can definitely help us out. Thank you.
And Candidate Hansel, what are your thoughts about the future energy sources? You're still on mute. I'm sorry.
Yeah, hi. I would like to bring my decades of experience, you know, as a finance executive here with my ambient business and finance and business, growing the business in Naperville. I would like to bring three things to the city and the residents. Affordability, reliability, and sustainability. These would be my priorities to work with the energy source. No, I would not support signing the contract as of today. We can wait. Affordability, yes. I want to make sure that the rate, it is affordable to all the Naperville residents and the ratepayers. Reliability, I wanted to make sure that they're keeping the lights on when you and your family needs it. Sustainability, whatever measure we take, it has to be naturally be sufficient and not impacting our environment. I want to make sure that whatever we sign the contract with, it has to be beneficial to the residents, not to the ratepayers. Natural industry energy is changing quite a bit these days, demographics and a lot of things changes. We'll work on that.
Thank you very much. Our next question will begin with Candidate Gibson. Loss of grocery tax revenue. With the anticipated loss of the grocery tax revenue, what specific strategies do you support to maintain essential city services and financial stability? So regarding the loss of grocery tax revenue, with the anticipated loss of the grocery tax revenue, what specific strategies do you support to maintain essential city services and financial stability? And like I said, we'll begin with Candidate Gibson.
Thank you. Yeah, the $6 million shortfall from the grocery tax is not a problem with one solution. I think there's a couple levers we need to look at. One is to obviously look at the budget and see where we can trim and look at our priorities, what needs to be done now versus what can be postponed, like water main replacement, you know, what pace we do that at. Those are some levers that we can adjust to fill that hole. Park District has a $53 million budget and we're servicing more people than ever. So we've had to continually figure out how to do more with less. So I have a lot of experience in that area. In terms of the grocery tax in general, I think we need to look at our other options and make sure that our fees and services for the things the city charges are on par with other municipalities. And that might be another area to offset revenue. And I think another example is the cart program. Recently just came that it's a $5 million savings. So I think we really need to be creative, looking at the entire budget to see where we can find that $6 million.
Thank you. Candidate Holshower. What specific strategies do you support to maintain essential city services and financial stability?
Thank you. I think one thing that is very important and sometimes lost in this conversation is the framing of the issue. This is a tax cut to help some of our neediest residents, people who are struggling to pay their grocery bills. So one thing I will not do is support a replacement of a tax cut with a tax increase on those groceries. Now, as far as the magnitude, it's about a $6 million loss of revenue, okay? The city of Naperville's revenue growth year-over-year last year was $46 million. We recently approved a program to underground about 5% or 6% of Naperville's electric wires, which will have a cost of $125 million over the years. So I think there's plenty of room in the government for us to tighten our belts, cut expenses where they are without raising taxes on groceries. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Jayswal, your thoughts?
Yes, as an executive and a transformation expert for 30 years, I have run budgets over the current one. And every time you have a deficit, you have two options. Either grow the revenue sources or reduce your cost. Now, reducing the cost is not an option. Increasing taxes burden on the residents is not an option. So looking at other revenue sources, also in the interim, we could put a hold on SICA or try to see different avenues where if we could either lower the payment of our loans so that we can still keep our AAA bonds and we can extend that payment term. So there are few options. However, we have several streams, revenue streams, that the city has not expanded yet. I would definitely look at my marketing technology experience and make sure I can give that to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McDaniel. What specific strategies do you support to maintain essential city services and financial stability?
Thank you. To begin with, I would not support raising our property tax. Right now, there are a number of residents who have lived here for many, many years who are beginning to find that Naperville is becoming an unaffordable community to live. I would actively support promote smart use of current tax dollars that we bring in. I would suggest looking at what projects that could be potentially delayed, also what projects are priority that we must implement so we can continue to invest in our infrastructure. I think it's important to recognize that in addition of a local grocery tax would be considered a regressive tax that would hurt the lower-income residents, much more so than higher-income residents. So that would be something we definitely do not want to do. What we really want to do is try to find new ways to bring in new business, generate additional revenue. Just had a Shake Shack today for the first time, one of the new businesses that we brought to Naperville, very exciting. And that's just one example. Another new business that'll be opening up along I-59 or I-59 corridor this year.
Thank you. Candidate Sayed.
I am a pre-pro-business person and I want to get more business to Naperville where we can generate revenue. So my personal thing is that, you know, get more small businesses to Naperville and get more revenue for Naperville. That is one. Second is federal funding. See, I have worked on Senex 2020 project for one year and after that, we got a great results of being top in the country. And then I sat with the city manager to find out how much we are getting, what we are getting it. Came to know that we are getting billions of dollars from federal government. So that is one of the options where we can work on those projects and get maximum funding from state and federal government. That will be a great icing on the cake, I can say. And second is, the next is CARE. Like, you know, Naperville Fire Department, they got the funding. So something like this on different, different projects, we can definitely get funding and we can be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate White, what specific steps, what specific strategies do you support to maintain essential city services and financial stability?
Sure. We have several different options. I'm a member of the Naperville Development Partnership and we're the arm that goes out and brings in development into the city of Naperville. So that's bringing in small businesses, even big businesses. So that's bringing in small businesses, even big businesses will help us out with that particular issue. Uh we're currently looking at the I eighty-eight corridor as far as exploring different things that we can do with that particular uh area. We also have the block fifty-nine project that's going in right now that will bring in more revenue into the uh to the city. The good thing uh I would say as well is that we are financially sound as a as a uh as a city. We have a triple A bond rating. Where our reserves are uh in the forty percent, we've totally exceeded what our goals were. We continue to offer great services and we've reduced our tax rates. So those things are all awesome. Understand this, we cannot increase a gross, we can't impose a grocery tax. We don't have the legal authority to do that. And and option, not that I'm saying to do this, but an option is that we do have a home rule cells uh authority. So that's something that we can look at as well. And if we did implement it, it would still keep us below our neighboring cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Banzal. You're on mute. Candidate Banzal.
Yeah, um I here I would like to bring again the my uh but experience with the township budget, HOA budget, my own business budgeting and where I would like to bring down the experience. Um I know the six million dollar budget is uh the void would be really affected the uh Naperville residents. So without burdening the tax on them, I would like to support the small businesses, businesses, especially supporting the minority business uh in the last few years as a planning and zoning commissioner, I was always happy to bring those businesses in the town. Then uh cutting down, going to the forensic audits with all the budget currently we have and cutting down the cost and the items which are not priority at this point. Let's put it down for the next few years and table later and work on more priority and bring those uh uh work on the budget. Like any other household, we try to bring revenues, we cut down the cost and we try to match up the budget. And I would like to support the youth as well here because they are trying to uh bring some more uh experience.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Holzhauer.
Um I never got to answer.
Oh, I am so sorry. I put I put an X in your square preemptively. So candidate present Taylor, thank you.
Thank you. So to be clear, this is a reoccurring six million dollar revenue loss. And so we need a reoccurring uh budget fill to help us with this problem. So doing anything like selling city land or even cutting out a project actually will not help us in any way. And also to be clear, the six million dollar revenue loss is hitting our general fund. Uh and so try eliminating or cutting out any of our water main replacements or our electric undergrounding does not help us in any way because that's actually paid through your electric and your your utility rates and we've already allocated for that for this year, the next uh three years, actually. So um we need to make sure we're looking for, as I've heard here say before, Benny did a great job explaining how we are visically sound as a city. We and how uh we need to continually look for uh economic development here. This is what's gonna help us. We need to look for actual reoccurring revenue um in order to help us solve this problem. And we have to, people have to actually understand the budget before they start trying to come in and uh kind of come up with solutions here. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, candidate Holzhauer, is the next question. What further efforts would you support, if any, to address affordable housing in Naperville?
Thank you. Well, first of all, um our council has been looking at this issue for over a decade now. And in good faith, uh along with actually an entirely unanimous at that time council of nine members, uh we endorsed a plan to move forward with incentives for developers to build housing um that would help improve the stock and uh quality of of housing for our workforce in Naperville, for younger families, for seniors. Um for reasons I don't completely understand, uh that plan was tanked by a five to four vote. Um unfortunately, within the last few months, um I hope way after this election and with uh the election new council members, we can bring it back. Um and I would uh vociferously uh support the approval of that ordinance, which at one time we had unanimous support for and which unfortunately um we're we're struggling to get across the line now. Thank you.
Candidate Jason, what further efforts would you support, if any, to address affordable housing in Naperville?
So I support the starter homes. Um affordable housing legally means, you know, it is a burden for all the tax base. And I'm working to expand the tax base and reduce the burden on residents. So at this point of time, Naperville is well served with starter homes. And then if we could change some of the zoning so that the senior citizens can stay with their children and we could increase the zoning so the backyards can be used for, you know, smaller uh structures. That is another option. But I'm against the affordable housing just because that every time you bring in a kid, uh it is nineteen thousand for two oh four, two oh three and four uh fourteen thousand additional burden for two oh four. We cannot take that as a city and TIF for the builders. The starter homes are a great option. We can bring in the younger generation and it will be a great, great asset for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Candidate McDaniel.
Thank you very much. I think it's very important to recognize we've made progress on this issue. Back in twenty twenty-three, we had an affordability rate of about seven point six. That was below the states, I believe it was the states uh uh set in order of ten percent. Uh we're at now about ten uh ten point three percent affordable. So we've we've exceeded that number. That doesn't mean we can stop there. We still need to continue to find, look for affordable options. Uh on planning zoning, I voted against that affordable housing program specifically because it included a buy right provision that said that me as a planning owner, zoning commissioner would not have the ability to review a project. City council uh men and women would not have the ability to vote or review on a project and the the residents in Naperville would not have the ability to raise their hand and say, I disagree with this project. That's a problem. We need to continue to find affordable solutions, but we have to do it the right way. Uh we have to do it the uh in a in a in a manner that reflects our growing need. The biggest population ju- growth uh segment here in Naperville is fifty-five and older. That's a segment that we need to continue to find solutions for. People who've lived here their whole lives, raised family here their whole lives, need to continue to have the ability to stay here, but we have to do it the right way.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Candidate Said, what further efforts would you support, if any, to address affordable housing in Naperville?
So I I meet with a lot of people in the community, whether it is a school district, teachers, fire department, for police department. I'm, I hear it is very challenging to live in Naperville. And Naperville is a dream city for everybody. Everybody want to live in Naperville. But we cannot afford, everybody cannot afford. So I call workforce, you know? Like Ian said, we definitely need to support and have workforce residential for our community who works in Naperville and can live in Naperville and raise their family in Naperville. I want my next generation to live in Naperville. My son and daughter today cannot afford to live in Naperville because of all those factors which we have got. But definitely I will support if we have a workforce housing where we can have next generation who can live here and enjoy the life of Naperville.
Thank you. Candidate White, your thoughts?
Yeah, um I I echo what uh Councilman uh Holzhauer said. We actually put a lot of work into this. And um it it didn't pass. And I mean, some of the stuff that was said was by right. Uh well, that was brought up in there. We had an opportunity to actually work that particular issue if the council wanted to do it. And just to be clear, uh a zoning ordinance by its very nature is a by right thing. So we could have worked around that particular thing. Uh the other piece is this, we brag so much about how great Naperville is for 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 safety and education and so on. But the police, the fire, the teachers, you know, they can't afford to live here. Yes, most of them can't live in Naperville. And I just think there's something fundamentally wrong about that. Uh our seniors is another growing demographic that should also be addressed. If you, I've I've been to Martin Avenue Apartments. Uh they've done a wonderful job over there, but there are five hundred people on the waitlist at Martin Avenue. Uh we need to put more housing out there for our seniors so that they can live here uh and be with those grandkids that they love so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So candidate Banzal, what specific strategies do you support to maintain essential city services and financial stability?
Affordable? Can you repeat the question?
What specific strategy, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What further efforts would you support, if any, to address affordable housing in Naperville?
Uh I would like to bring here the balancing approach, what uh without disturbing the Naperville's fabric and border uh and what is the need of the resident, I would like to bring here both approach without raising the taxes or without burdening our schools, without burdening our taxpayers, what is the best for their need? I would like to bring that here. In last few years, um I remember two of my proj- uh two of the projects I I voted yes, which is hundred and third and Route fifty-nine, which is coming for the senior and people with disabilities, that project. And one of the medium density home, which is uh focusing towards the youth, uh and we all know how much it is difficult to retain our youth. And we all want our kids to come back and stay with us. So uh with this, I would like to support these, especially when it is for the youth and the senior and what is best for the Naperville and what is best for the fabric of the Naperville. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate present Taylor.
Thank you. Uh to be clear, we actually never voted on the affordable housing incentive ordinance, so we don't know how the vote would have actually gone down. Um but as for the question itself, like I'm a huge proponent of housing for intellectually developmentally delayed community. That's something that um I'm very proud of the project at hundred third and Route fifty-nine, that I was integral part uh from the very beginning, pushing for that location, pushing for uh being part of the team for the RFP for um working with the IDD community. And also, this is a unique opportunity because we pair it with our seniors, as was already described. We have a huge shortage of how affordable housing for seniors, people who help build up our community, want to stay here. And so I'm excited that we have, we have this project coming. We left enough land to do a second phase. And I know that I'm also interested, well, hopefully develop Fifth Avenue to add one over there and other locations as well. Because both in Illinois and Naperville itself, there's a huge need for this type of housing. And I'm proud that we're taking the lead for this unique project that combines these two communities together. And I'm hopeful for the future with it as well. Thank you.
Candidate Gibson, your thoughts on the subject?
Thank you. I think a diverse housing stack is important for a healthy city. Not only does it allow people to stay in the city they love um when life circumstance changes, but it allows our young people to move back. And it allows the people that work here to live here, especially if some of our neighboring communities develop uh down, especially to the south and the west, Oswego. Plainfield, um we run the risk of losing our workforce who wants to work closer to home and can't afford to live in Naperville anymore. Um I think it was unfortunate that after such a long time working on the affordable housing um AHIP plan, um that it did seem pretty abruptly scrapped, even though it seemed um at that meeting at city council that there was room for compromise and discussion. Uh there's nine people that vote on city council. And the reason there are nine is so we can have diverse perspectives and work together to come with a solution that everybody is happy with and meets multiple needs. Um so it was unfortunate to see such an important vote come down to, I believe it was a five-four decision. I would have liked to see more compromise um to get something substantial.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to our next question, which will begin with candidate Jason. What are key transportation issues facing Naperville and how do you propose to address them? So let me repeat the question one more time. What are key transportation issues facing Naperville? And how do you propose to address them? Candidate Jason?
Yeah, so when I moved to Naperville, uh I was attracted by the I eighty-eight corridor businesses. And the commute used to be pretty fast to going to I eighty-eight, I live in South Naperville. Uh with increase of the density of the residents and the businesses, now it takes twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes just to reach I eighty-eight. And if we are going to depend on commuting to downtown either via train or otherwise, a good three hours to four hours are wasted in a day on commute. So number one, get the best out of the I eighty-eight corridor so our kids can work here, we can work here. And then the local trails, we need to make sure that the local trails are all combined so we can bike to the train station. If if there are no local work, we could still commute. Um that that would be the most important thing and uh try to have local transportation up to the train or important places. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McDaniel, what are key transportation issues facing Naperville and how do you propose to address them?
Sure, thank you very much. Uh when I was younger, you could get from one end of town to the next in five minutes. Now, it takes thirty to forty sometimes. Um you know, that type of congestion has really led to uh a lot of headaches, a lot of wear and tear on our infrastructure. I I think that we could really look to uh look to find ways to maximize the efficiency of our public transportation, our bus systems that we have here in town. Uh I think we also can look to find ways to encourage uh people to commute on on bikes if possible and when and where. I know the weather sometimes can discourage that. Uh but uh we need to be much more um uh adaptable to the current environment in which we live. Uh and I think, you know, a range of solutions, including, you know, bus, including uh ride share, including uh a bike, it could all be part of the solution.
Thank you. Candidate Said, your thoughts on this subject?
Yeah, I have lived in Dubai and Dubai is one of the place where people wanted to go and enjoy their vacation. And I have seen the transportation of Dubai, how they have such a wonderful transportation. Trains, bus, taxis, rides, everything they have got. So I am dreaming that one day Naperville will become like Dubai. I'm dreaming. Hope we can make it. Then we have got flyover bridges, they make flyover bridges. Definitely the transportation of buses are very, you know, very, very, very smoothly. Every ten minutes you have a bus to move to some place. Tra- transportation about the taxis, they have fantastic government taxis. And they are run by government and they make sure that, you know, that the passengers are safe and transportation wise, it is helping the community. So I feel that Naperville should come up a a little more boldly with flyer of with bridges and transportation like buses. We need to have more buses within the city to travel there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Candidate White, what are key transportation issues facing Naperville and how do you propose to address them?
Sure, um I think one thing we uh we need to take a look at is uh what I would call the uh the bike trails, which has been mentioned by a few candidates already. I think that'd be something we definitely should do. Not only would it uh help in that regard, but it'll think about the carbon footprint that we've been talking about with the IMEA and all those different things with the environment that would help uh help to assist in that. I think the other piece to look at is uh our our seniors. We look uh at, talk to a lot of them about trying to get around Naperville. Um some of them can't get ri- rides. We have something called uh an organization called Ride Assist Naperville, also known as RIN, that they, that's available, but we need other organizations maybe to step up and to help provide the transportation as well. Traffic down there. I I I have my eighty-eight-year-old father-in-law that lives with us. And when he was driving, there's the parking downtown, for example, it's hard for him to park and then go somewhere else. The handicap parking is so far away from the businesses, something else to uh to explore. So uh and the last thing is that bridge should be done by the
I'm sorry, the time has elapsed. So we're gonna ask the same question to candidate Banzal.
Um yeah, Naperville has three thirty-nine point six eight square miles of area and now hundred and fifty thousand population, which is huge. Uh and uh uh I, we know that with the with the budget of six hundred forty-one point one one four million dollar, it is very expensive to spend more and more on the infrastructural side. I would like to suggest like nowadays people are very much working from home, but of course e-bikes is this this is possibility, walk to school, walk to work, uh if possible, if it's not too far. We can always uh work on the carpool, ride share, people are driving, taking the trains. These are the other options. I know the wa- a lot of other projects are going on widening the roads. But everything adds up to the cost and everything adds up to the our budget. Uh so I would like to suggest that if we can without uh raising some more taxes or burdening our di- our city's budget, we can always suggest these ideas to go more and more healthier options like e-bikes and uh walking to school and so on.
Thank you. Candidate present Taylor.
Thank you. I'll uh finish her what Benny was trying to say. We're supposed to have the Washington Street Bridge done uh by fourth of July there. Uh so uh for me, I mean, this is part of a sustainability, right? Um which is one of the things that I'm running on. You know, having other options besides vehicles. I know that um you know, I, until my third child was born, you know, we only had one vehicle that we were able to work, uh live, uh use. Uh but one of the things says pedestrian safety, right? Bicycle safety. Uh you know, it, we want to encourage people to um use these alternatives, but we need to make them feel comfortable doing so. And so I am happy that as a council that we have been supportive of updating our bicycle and pedestrian safety plan. We've hired a consultant. Uh we're on track uh for We've hired a consultant, um, we're on track, uh, for that to come in at the end of this year. And it's tied with our road safety update plan as well. And so I'm excited where, how we're gonna improve our roads and, and our bicycle paths so that people can feel more comfortable and safer using these alternate options, which helps our environment as well. Thank you.
Candidate Gibson.
Um, I like, when I think transportation, I do think of the Washington Street Bridge. Um, I know we are all excited for that to be done. Um, it's taken a lot longer than expected. I think it's important that council reality test vendor assumptions, um, when we choose who we're gonna be working with. I know we're starting our road improvement plan, um, so I'm looking forward to that and how that can streamline transportation, especially congestion town, especially um, towards our businesses. Um, the bikeability mobility plan, I know was budgeted for in the last year's budget. And the consultant, uh, didn't get hired, so I'm anxious to see that happen this year. Um, through my work on the Park District, it's always, um, surprised me. I always thought what people wanted from their parks were playgrounds, but actually bike and trail connectivity is the number one thing across the country that people ask for. So I'm really anxious and looking forward to working with the city on merging the bikeability and active mobility plan with our road improvement plan. So that way it can be streamlined for different types of mobility.
Thank you. And candidate Holthammer, what are the key transportation issues facing Naperville? And how do you propose to address them?
Thank you. I agree with many of the comments that were already made, so instead of repeating them, I'll just kind of make this personal. Um, every time there is a pedestrian strike and a fatality in Naperville, the city council gets a notification. And every time I look at my phone and think the same thing, dear God, I first of all pray for the family. But also I wonder if this is somebody I know and, and how is this gonna affect them? Um, one thing that is very troubling is in twenty twenty-two, uh, nationally, we had, um, the worst year for pedestrian safety in decades. It is literally, um, probably the biggest public safety issue in Naperville right now. Now, solutions, I'm really proud of the work we've done to improve walkability in April. We have ways to go, some visible improvements. You can look at the underpass under Seventy-Fifth Street, uh, so that people can now bike and walk from the south to the north end of town. Uh, the Riverwalk extension that Canada Gibson and I have worked so hard on, on the Riverwalk Commission. ADA improvements so people can get around in limited mobility. And we just need to keep working in this area for our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the next question is gonna begin with candidate McDaniel. And it's a rather long question, so I will read it twice. What if anything should be changed to ensure that city boards and commissions represent the community and reach their potential to serve the city? What if anything should be changed to ensure that city boards and commissions represent the community and reach their potential to serve the city? Candidate McDaniel?
I, I think, um, uh, it's important to, to reflect on the changes that have already been made. Uh, that we can always, you know, prove, there's always room for improvement. But, um, uh, when Mayor Worley was most recently elected, he, that was one of, uh, the, uh, his, his, you know, first and foremost initiatives was to uh, ensure that the boards and commissions accurately reflect, uh, the demographic of Naperville. So, uh, he has a very, you know, great process of reviewing applications, understanding what, uh, uh, positions are open. Candidates can apply to three, uh, available boards and commissions. Um, and, and they're always looking for ways to increase diversity between age, uh, geography here in Naperville, uh, uh, race and, and religion. So I think we, we're doing a great job. We just need to continue to ensure that, uh, the commissions reflect, uh, the city at large.
Thank you. Candidate Said?
So five years ago, I was appointed on the commission, like Naperville, uh, library board. And I was so excited that I, being a immigrant, being a South Asian, being a diverse candidate, uh, being a, you know, uh, Muslim and all those things, I was appointed there and I felt very warm welcoming. And I think, I feel that we are doing excellent, but definitely we can improve. And for that improvement, definitely we need to have more people from different backgrounds, with different qualifications, different, uh, so, so what I can say is part of Naperville, like southeast, west and everybody. So that we have a great, great, uh, you know, representation from every building. And age-wise, definitely, I wanted to have more youngsters coming to this boards and commission. I'm young, I'm here, but definitely I want to see more young people coming to this boards and commission so that they can add value to that, that position. So these are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate White.
Yeah, I think, um, what the bottom line is, representation here is important. Our community is so diverse. We have thirty-five percent minority. Uh, we have, and not just mu- from a minority standpoint, but we have several seniors, we have young people here as well. And we, so we need to really emphasize on, uh, having that representation there. Uh, the one thing that we can do is we need to market our commissions and boards better. We, uh, uh, we, they're on the website, but everyone doesn't know to go there. We have several organizations. We just had a, uh, an event with the co- with Kawa and that question was asked there. And a lot of the residents within that community don't, did not even know that some of these things were, uh, available. So we've got to do a better job of going into some of our nonprofit organizations, some of our community organizations to get the word out about what's available, uh, for them as well. I recall, uh, when, uh, I first got on the council, you, you walk in in the back where the mayor's office was and he had this huge map that had pins all over the place. And he was marking where people were coming from demographically within the community. So that is something we can definitely expand upon.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate pencil?
Uh, we moved to this town twenty years back and, uh, George Mayor Fredrick was the visionary. And he saw that how these, uh, demographics and different diverse community are moving to the Naperville. And, uh, that's when he created Indian Community Outreach, Chinese Community Outreach, Hispanic and different boards and commission. So to me, it is like any other job application you do. I applied for three se- different boards and commission. And I got interviewed by, uh, Scott, Mayor Scott Worley with the staff. And that's how I got appointed with the planning and zoning commission. I have, uh, uh, recommended several other youth and see, in, in fact, the senior, my friends and everybody. And everybody is going through the same process. I think it's extremely important to go with a different criteria to serve on the boards, community involvement, engagement and, uh, cha- challenging these boards and commission and serving these boards is extremely important. And I think they're doing well and we do see a lot of people serving in different boards and commission from diverse groups, different demographics, age, regardless of. Thank you.
Thank you. So candidate present Taylor, what if anything should be changed to ensure that city boards and commissions represent the community and reach their potential to serve the city?
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters because about two and a half years ago, uh, you guys did a very detailed, uh, study and led the charge as to a number of recommendations that you recommended that us on council adopt, and many of which we did when it came to the appointments of boards and commissions. So thank you for all the work you've done to help us so far. And I, I, these were very well received by our current mayor, uh, Scott Worley. And I know some implement, um, many if not all of them actually. And so to make sure our board, um, is diverse in many ways, as already mentioned, through age, um, race, gender, even political affiliation. And also as to whether, where they live within Naperville. Um, and I don't have the exact numbers on me right now. I do know that at least eighteen percent of our boards and commissions are Asian, which is close to the twenty percent in our community. And as for our student-led, sixty-seven percent are Asian, uh, cause we do have high schoolers who are on almost all of our boards and commissions to help give that perspective as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the kind words. Candidate Gibson.
So I serve on the Riverwalk Commission. I, I know there's a lot of boards and commissions in the city. And I think they are a great way for people across our city to get involved who might not be connected to Naperville politics, Naperville decision makers. It's a great opportunity for everyday Napervilleans to, uh, share their expertise to help make our city better. Um, so in that light, I'd like to see more transparency about who has applied to these positions, um, compared to who is chosen for these positions, to make sure that, um, we are being representative, um, from those being applied. I know we post them online and we see who gets appointed, but not always who applied. Um, I think in terms of these boards and commissions reaching their full potential, we need to look at attendance records for them, um, to make sure that people who are appointed are actually showing up and going to the meetings. Um, cause if not, I, we have a hundred fifty thousand people in Naperville and there's a lot of people who want to serve our committee or our community, we should have a shot. Um, and also I, I think we need to look at, um, you know, Naperville, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Candidate Holthammer?
Thank you. I agree with many of the comments that have been already made. Um, I'd just like to share a few of the success stories of having these, um, diverse perspectives on boards and commissions. Um, first, uh, let's look at our library board president who's, who's in this forum, right? Uh, President Ashvaksayad, um, through his connections in the library, he did things like in the pandemic, organize, uh, events where city council members could communicate in a safe way with community members to help them know the latest things that were going on. Uh, I was just reading or looking at the comments that Commissioner Vonsal made, uh, with regard to the Wells Fargo development on, um, Chicago Avenue, um, serving with, uh, Commissioner Gibson on the Riverwalk, uh, commission, where we take high school student input and incorporate it into our vision. I was actually a high school student that had the idea of having an artist's overall look where people could paint portraits on the Riverwalk. Um, so we only get stronger as a community with those diverse perspectives and I'm so glad for the reforms we've had.
Thank you. And candidate Jase Wong?
So transparency is one thing, uh, somebody mentioned it before. So there is about thirty-seven percent of Asian community here in Naperville. Uh, there are just one organization cannot be represented. Uh, there are, there are many different organizations. So the transparency, who is applying, who is getting selected i- is number one. And communication when things change so that the, uh, members, right? It has to be outcome-based, uh, so that we are not just attending these boards because we need to, but are they having an agenda and outcome? So again, transparency is the biggest thing. And an election for library board, just like how Aurora does, it has about twenty-four million dollar budget, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then I think it's due now for an election. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was our last question. So it's, you can take a deep breath and it'll now be time for closing statements. And so we'll get, have one-minute closing statements and begin with candidate Said.
Wow. Thank you so much. My name is Ashvaksayad. I'm running for Naperville City Council, not for the title, not for the position, but to serve you all, Naperville community. Hundred and fifty thousand population is my family. I feel it. Because I have worked very hard for last eight years in this community and you all have accepted me as one of you. In eight years, we make, we, we all feel so honored and humble that we are raising our family here. And definitely I want to be there at city council so that I can help the larger community. I'm a taskmaster. I believe in working, you know? I, I'm not a, a speaker where I can come and speak about myself, but I want to be an action person who can work on the ground. I believe in, let my work speak for me. So please go to my website, Ashvaksayad Naperville. You will see the track record, what I have built in last eight years. And nobody can beat on that, you know, as a, as a community member, not an, as an elected official. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate White, your one-minute closing statement, please.
Sure. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the League again for, uh, hosting. This was absolutely a, a wonderful forum. Um, I lived, I moved here twenty years ago and I did it because of, uh, the great schools and the, the diverse community that I explored when I got here. And those are the types of things that I, uh, that really have a lot of value for myself. Um, I mentioned before, being on the, uh, city council for the last eight years has been, uh, been, been a great experience. We've done so much work, but I'm probably most proud of the fact that we're able to update our city's mission statement to the point that it now reads, an inclusive community that values diversity. And that's, uh, been a big thing that, that's allowed this community, I think, to, to have an opportunity to reach its full potential. Um, I have moved around so many times, being in the army every two to three years, and I've lived here for twenty years. And, uh, this is my home. This is my home and I'm proud to say that. Again, uh, I'm Benny White, um, number one on the ballot and I would appreciate your support. Please go to BennyWhite.org to more, to learn more about me. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Vonsal, your one-minute closing statement, please.
Hi, I'm Agna Banzer, number six on the ballot. I'm asking for your vote and your support, April first, early voting, March seventeen. I lost in twenty twenty-three and by just forty votes. I took it as a challenge. I, uh, I've been involved, committed and engaged with community, Naperville residents and everybody. I wanted to run for you, for Naperville, for residents. I will be your voice. I will be your representation. I have been attending the city council meetings because I want to understand what Naperville brings into. Naperville is unique and extraordinary. I would not like to work and strengthen more for the generations to come. I, I understand the needs and concerns of our seniors, our youth, our businesses, our police and fire, our safety, our law enforcement. I'm ready to serve. I'm ready to work to make the neighborhood safe for your families, for generations to come. So please vote for me, number six on the ballot, and I need your support. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate present Taylor, you went, your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you and thank you to the League and everyone here listening tonight. As you all heard, um, there are some tough decisions ahead of us. And we need people on council with the experience and body of knowledge that I already have to continue to keep the city moving in a positive direction. There is no learning curve with me. I'm known on council as the person to reach out to for fact-checking. I treat my council job as my full-time job and every day I'm meeting with residents and speaking with staff regarding city matters. Something I said when I ran in twenty twenty-one and I continue to say today is you'll not always agree with all my decisions. And you shouldn't because we're not lemmings, but know that all my decisions are made after doing the research and speaking to residents, business owners and staff and any interested parties here. And not because there is some special interest group telling me what to do. And so vote to reelect me, Councilwoman Jennifer Brazan Taylor, number three on the ballot. And check out my website, tailorfor, F O R, Naperville dot com to learn more. Thanks so much.
Candidate Gibson, your closing remarks?
Yes. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening. As we look forward to the future of Naperville, I believe experience, dedication and a strong vision are essential for effective leadership. Throughout my service as the Park District President and Naperville Riverwalk Commissioner, I've consistently demonstrated my commitment to serving our community with integrity and focus. My background in data analytics and public policy has prepared me to make thoughtful, informed decisions that balance fiscal responsibility with the needs of our growing city. I believe in building partnerships, strengthening public safety, ensuring that Naperville remains a welcoming, vibrant place for families and businesses alike. I'm not just running to hold a title, I'm running to make a lasting impact. I'm committed to showing up, doing the work and always putting our community first. So together we can build a stronger and better Naperville. I'd be honored to have your vote on or before April first. Uh, Mary Gibson, I'll be number two on your ballot. Thank you.
Candidate Vonsal?
It's been an honorable lifetime to serve as your Naperville City Councilman over the last four years. And as we get ready to make this election, uh, and this big decision of the eight people that are on the screen right now, um, four will continue on to the city council and I hope that I'm one of them, um, and four will not. But however the election turns out, uh, I just want everyone on the screen know that I will be cheering for you hard, whether you're part of that group or not. I will always stay committed to this community. It's the community I was born and raised in. It's a community that I love and I've always put in the homework and done my very best to make sure that the decisions we make on council are best for our community financially, in terms of our reputation and in terms of protecting the values that we hold so strongly. I'm asking for your vote on April first and I'm asking for you to believe in Naperville. Thank you.
Candidate Jason, your one-minute closing statement?
As a global citizen, I have traveled across the world and this is the place where I am settled, my three, with my three generations. A day without, you know, not a day goes without serving the community. And there are a lot of big decisions that need to be made, both that are going to impact fiscally and for long term. It is going to be on sustainability of the city, how the city grows. We lost an opportunity when the whole world grew, as I have seen, uh, global growth. Naperville used to be a net exporter of switches. Now we are net exporter of capital. I want you to trust in me. I will vote the way you would vote in the city council for a decision that will make sure that you and your next generations can live in the city and thrive. My number is eight on the ballot. Again, my name is Nagja Swa. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate McDaniel, your one-minute closing statement?
Thank you very much. You know, as a longtime resident, uh, I have. Thank you very much. You know, as a longtime resident, I have grown up with and been directly involved in city council and mayoral campaigns from a very young age. It has been such a, a, an honor and a privilege to be involved with one directly as a candidate today. You know, I can tell you, it has been such a privilege to go out, meet residents, knock on doors, reconnect with my fifth grade gym teacher, which was such a fun experience. And I humbly ask for your vote, your confidence and your trust on April first and I'm ballot number five.
Thank you all so much. On behalf of the community, I thank you. And on behalf of the League, I thank you for being with us this evening. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope that each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family and friends and neighbors to do the same. Information on how and when to vote can be found on votefouroneone.org and the Naperville League of Women Voters website and social media. We hope that you will take advantage of early voting, which starts March seventeenth, since Election Day, April first falls during spring break. Recording of this forum for Naperville City Council can be found on the Naperville League of Women Voters website, website and YouTube channel. So I want to say good night and to the candidates, best of luck to you on the campaign trail. Good night.